Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is... Let me get my right paper here. Discussion and possible, I'm sorry, this is... This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 at 5:30 PM in our City of Bisbee Council chambers. We'll call, Joni?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
I'm Ken Budges here, Mayor. Leslie Johns is excused. Mel?
Here.
And Anna?
Here.
Thank you. We have Steve Hawken and also our city attorney, Joe Estes. We have one item tonight. This will be the interviews by the Mayor and Council for the candidates for the vacant seat of Ward Three. We have two applicants. And the way we'll do this tonight is, I know it's cold outside, but we'll have to ask you to step out while we interview each separately. And then unfortunately, again, you'll have to leave because we'll be in to a special, to an executive session to discuss, and then we'll bring everybody back in and make our announcements. So if that's the way you... The way we'll do this, so let me move forward from that point. If we could get you to excuse yourselves. And Winetta, you can go first if you'd like. Your name's first on the list. And we'll call you in, Rick.
Okay. What do you, what do you...
The black.
Okay.
Soon. Make sure you got your heater on. Good evening. Thank you. And I think I know your shiny face, and I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell us why you want to continue to be Ward Three's council member. Thank you.
Okay. Winetta, here. And I actually have a little fear of hope for myself. Turn it on?
It's on.
Yeah. Still can't hear me. All right. One second. Let me look at all my notes. Okay. Obviously, since I put a letter of interest, I submitted that, you know that I would like to continue as the incumbent and the council, Ward Three council member. And I actually have been thinking very seriously about this and what I could continue, what, why I should continue.
One minute. I don't think the other mics are on.
The light is on.
I know, but...
Yeah, none of them are on.
Power button.
Oh.
Is that, I just hit the power button.
She makes it so easy. You just have to let it do it. I know. There's a, there's a way to turn on the overall system.
Yeah, it's up.
But you're...
She didn't mention that. She didn't mention the cable.
And you can leave that on, actually.
Yeah, we don't have anything on. Hannah, will she hit it? Yeah. Yeah, when she hits it, it goes beep.
I heard something.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we will...
In addition to being an attorney.
I guess, yeah.
I only charge $20 an hour for like...
For IT services?
We can share the list with us. Okay, so, sorry for that. Everybody is out there. We, my problem, so... Meeting is to or, called to order, and we are listening from our first candidate. Maybe we could start over from your start, that way.
Winetta, here.
Yep? Thank you.
As the Ward Three representative, okay, councilperson. And like I said before, was, I've had to think very seriously about the why and what, why I should remain as Ward Three representative and what I could, what I could continue offering Bisbee. And although I've got the history, I already have said 15 years visiting Bisbee often, I didn't move here until 2015, when I retired, and we all already know that, I married my husband. Was my sweetheart for about 30 years. And when I look over here at the council members, I look at individuals with college degrees who are passionate about finance, who have grown up in Bisbee and hold positive in positions and positions of responsibility. And those who have had extensive business and political experience. The one thing that you all have in common is that you have a passion for Bisbee as a whole. My background is social services. So basically, I would say, as my background, I have gotten down and dirty with those who have been disenfranchised in the past. And I admit that I have limited government experience, political background. However, I do share the same passion that each of you share for Bisbee as a whole. And that's one of the reasons that I want to remain on the council. I believe... Throughout my life, I have served, shared many meals. I've shared meals with people who live under bridges. I have shared meals with the heads of universities and presidents of corporations. One thing that stood out across the socioeconomic spectrum was the ability to relate and communicate effectively. I believe that I do that well. As the current incumbent board member for Ward Three, I am committed to ensuring that everyone has a voice. I am committed to... So that if I don't have the answers, I'm able to get the answers, so that everyone throughout Bisbee is represented. And as you know, who you see is who I am.
Thank you. We're going to move ahead and just ask, we have certain questions here that we'll all ask everybody the same, and then I'm going to give the liberty to ask a second question if somebody wants to, but please keep that in the same realm that you asked the other person. So just move ahead, Joni, you can start with yours, and then we can go from there, down the line.
What do you see role as a councilperson?
What do I see my role as a councilperson? I represent, represent, I represent residents of Bisbee. As a councilperson, I have a responsibility to listen to everyone in Ward Three specifically, but everyone that resides in Bisbee. I am also committed to supporting, supporting learning and doing what is necessary that Bisbee thrives as a community, as a city, that's looking at, for example, the land that was donated to us in Ward Three, and being actively involved in conversations about how we utilize land, making decisions that support the community overall. That's my responsibility.
Thank you. Go ahead, Frank.
What do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
I have several passions. Children are a passion of mine. And I've said this before, and I say it always, whenever I move to a new community, I sit down in a public place and I observe. And when I moved here, I observed that there, we have tourists and tourists come here with children. And we do not offer any services for tourists, for children. So when I did my unofficial scientific study last summer in the park, grassy green, I had 800 contacts who said to me how much they appreciated the fact that we, that I was there and I offered something to tourists and community residents, children in all of Bisbee. I am committed to growth of Bisbee overall, and that includes providing resources for families with children that want to come to Bisbee.
Okay. Thank you. My question is similar to what I've always asked, is that we're overseen by the media and by public, and how we interact with them, and of course, mainly how we act with citizens, because that's what really our job is. So you have some experience now, what would be your way of, your best way, you feel, of interacting with the public is?
I'm very comfortable interacting with the public. Lately, you will, well, one of the ways within Bisbee, Bisbee is a very active community. We have both annual events and events that pop up all the time. Part of interacting with the community is being visible, being available so that people are comfortable to come up with me and have any conversation that they deem important. Is also supporting various activities and events throughout Bisbee, so that people know that I am not only, I'm not just the seat warmer on the council, but I am also out there, I'm face that they can recognize and that they can talk to. By being on, being active in various other organizations, then they, those individuals get to know me more than just in passing, but we can establish a relationship that we can, that I can build upon.
Great, thank you. Anna?
Ms. Winetta, what do you see as two of the most important issues facing the City of Bisbee, and how should the council address them?
That's a very good question. Question two most important. Housing is a major issue. It's a constant conversation, whether I'm involved in that conversation or I'm privy to it because I'm sitting next to someone. Conversation which we have addressed regarding Airbnb, but it still is, remains a conversation. Available housing for people who want to live here, and realistic rental fees as well. That's one. The other is, it's really difficult probably to articulate this, but we have an older population, and we have, for me in particular, an area of interest is, because we have an older, an older population, it is possible for them to isolate. And, for example, my friend just moved north. Older with health issues, but even though I had been going to her house, checking on her many times, didn't know that she had lost her hearing, and never knew I was at the door. We, and we've addressed that, since then, but for me, that's an issue to make sure that those who are elderly have a resource that keeps them involved one way or the other in the community, and that we can take care of them. Thank you.
Mel?
Thank you for reapplying to this position. How would you, as a city council member, balance sometimes conflicting ones, constituents, and the need of the city as a whole?
Please repeat, repeat that, please.
How would you, as a city council member, balance the sometimes conflicting ones of the constituents and the needs of the city as a whole?
I actually thought about that in great detail. Okay. I received a few nasty grants since I've been here. I call them nasty grants. Where people didn't agree with how I voted. We have to take each and every one of those conflicting opinions individually. We do have guidelines, laws, structure that exist, and we also have to take into consideration everyone's need. I cannot say blanket, this is what I'm going to decide, either in the favor of the council or the individual, because you have to take everything, you have to take everything on an individual basis. Now, for example, City Hall. Okay. City Hall, I, when I came on the council, I had the privilege of being, having conversations about considering to leave it in Ward. Right? There are some decisions that have to be made for the betterment of the city, taking into consideration, or like the City Hall, the amount of time that was, that has passed since the earth, the amount of resources that were invested in it, the impact it has had on the city and the city council with the number of moves that we have made, which all of this is public knowledge, right? And at some point, we make a decision, we build that is for the betterment of the city, and that betterment outweighs all of the objections, and being able to honor that decision is still worth it.
I am, if I interrupt for a moment, I'm monitoring Facebook, and everybody's complaining they can't hear.
They can't...
Yeah. Need to pull the microphone a little closer to you.
And that's not just her, that's everybody.
It's stuck this big right into the mic, but that's what's here. So as an option, I'm going to let everyone, if you have an extra question you'd like to ask, I just ask it, so we keep it consistent, it's in the same line as the, as the next applicant. So, do you have anything to ask? Joni, you good?
I, I'm fine.
So, my second question, if I have one, would be, do you see any conflict of interest? Because I always, I worry about conflict of interest among us, and, and some of us have jobs, some of us have businesses, you have a business. So I'm just wondering if you have any feeling on, on would a conflict of interest enter into anything you have to do with, with your business outside of the, outside of the council? Do you have any feelings on that, or you feel fine about recusing yourself, or what? Just let me know a little bit.
Excellent, excellent question, and I have taken that into consideration. You know, I also, at one time, was on the Arts Commission, and since I deal with art, I always recruit myself, okay? I have to respect the guidelines that we have there. I don't believe that there should be any conflict in the type of business that I do. And if something did come before the council, I most definitely would recuse myself.
Okay, just, I'm going to put it out there. Thank you. Anna?
I do have, I do have a problem. Budget time is around the corner. What are your budgetary concerns and priorities? And it's a two-part question. So the second part to that would be, and do you have any ideas on ways to increase revenue?
Brian?
Uh, thank you. I have thought about that, because I was certain that that question was going to come up. Dealing with the budget from where I am right now as a council member, I want to invest more time in understanding where we are in financially and with the budget. So I'm going to say that even if someone else takes this role, they're going to also have to invest in time and energy in understanding how the budget works, what are priorities for the city, so that they can make, and so I can make, an intelligent, informed response for that question. How can we generate more income? Last month, we had our very first arts festival. It brought in a little less than 3,000 people, from what I was told, okay? That's a resource, like many of the other events, that bring in money to the city. That's part of it. The other part of it is generating, I know we do grants, we do, we generate funds from government resources, et cetera. So I would say that we look at all possible options that are available for us, that would generate income on an ongoing basis, over and above how we're currently generating income.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, Winetta, you, you've been serving on the council for the past few months, and you've seen how we operate, and in your own opinion, what would you think we can do better as a, as a council, as manager of the city, to run, to something that you wish, you said I had done if you had not come back? What would that be?
Top of mind always is how we relate to residents overall. Where I am is, I feel that the most valuable thing that we can do as a council is have a good rapport with each other. By understanding each other better, it's a social service background, better communication amongst each other, understanding the strengths of each other allows everyone on the council to make decisions that, and to make decisions and to understand the decisions that they are.
So with that, I will give you any, you have any questions for us, or do you have any closing remarks in the last four minutes I have to do? Move on at half hour each.
Okay. I'm going to use Mel's question. You are a council of individuals who are, who have been serving Bisbee well for different periods of time, okay? So maybe this is not a good question. What do you feel is the most valuable contribution in how you have managed the city, managed the view of it?
Well, you necessarily put that to one person, but I'll, from, I guess, the head of the table over here. I mean, be quite honest, we're here to serve the public. The public are basically our employees. They're the ones that tell us, it's our job to, I know everybody has that pothole they hit outside their house every day, that's the most important to them, or, or somebody else has a, an issue with their business that isn't necessary, but we, as a council, have to look at the city in whole, and our, our decisions here are based on trying to move the city and keep it moving along, so that we can meet our budgetary needs, but also keep a sense of community. So that's, I think, our goal as a council overall is, is, and I'm hoping that you have that same feeling, that, that it's all about community, and how we serve that community, and how we, how we, how we provide for them. Because to me, the most important local, most important government is local government. And, you know, whatever happens out in Washington DC is a million miles away, and yes, it does affect us, but if the governor doesn't get picked up, or everything doesn't happen, that's, that's giving you a home. And so I think that we, you know, try to be in touch with all of our constituents, because really, that's the important part. So, but, thank you for the question. Any last closing remark?
No. I guess the last part, closing remark, is that I'm committed to this council, and I would like to continue serving as a councilperson for Ward Three.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you don't want to shut that off, because he's going to come in next. If you would, go heat your car up, you can... Thank you.
Thank you, fuel-efficient way.
I know, I wish we had another building. One day, we'll have another building, so we'll...
That's why you should always carry a bike in your car.
I did, yeah.
Someone, can you start the engine on the hybrid car? It's not moving.
Hmm. I didn't know that. Right. She's got friends. I'll get a mic, please.
I'll mind your gas, because there's... Ms. Wiggins, get your gun out, please.
So, I got a remark here that says, when you can't hear much, you know the sound system is screwed up. I left one more app.
I thought I was talking into this.
So I don't know if there is a...
Well, I don't know exactly what...
There's a volume control, or...
I think it's part...
I think there is a volume.
Well, it is, we're... Well, it is, we're, we're okay, but what I think it is, is the camera, maybe it's not as sensitive as the one we've used before. It's a different, it's a different camera.
Well, we'll ping our IT guy, we'll see.
That's right.
Yeah, well, that's, that looks like.
Well, because it's cheaper than it is as a lawyer.
And, and, we're having technical issues on our public hearing what we're saying, so try to speak up. I tried to, and, and that would help us. Rick, I would, I appreciate you coming in, and I'm going to give you a couple of minutes for just an opening statement, and then we're going to do some questions, and then what will happen is a final statement. I'm trying to hold it down to like thirty minutes, and hopefully that will be, so, go ahead, state your full name and, and why you want to join the council.
Okay. I'm Rick Haddo. I was in ninety-six South Anama, Lenny, in Bisbee. And I've been watching you guys on Facebook and been part of Bisbee for a long time, and it's a lot of work that you all do, and it takes a lot of energy. And I feel that I could provide a lot of help and energy into this group. There's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes, and I recognize that, and the late work that's necessary to do it. I'd like to volunteer to follow up on issues and conditions that citizens and the council has, and see what we can do on perhaps getting grants or, you know, reviewing budgets and that sort of stuff. So, that was the reason for my hat and the ring.
Okay, great. We're going to start down here and just work our way down for a set of questions. So, start with Councilmember Jacobina.
What do you see as your role as a council member?
Mainly to represent the, the community that I live in to begin with, and then from there to support the council staff and the mayor, and to represent the community with, with all sorts of projects that you guys will have. So, it's sort of be the interface between the public and your office here.
Okay. Go ahead.
What, what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
I'd like to, of course, you know, see it happen, be transparent for the community. I'd like to try to have more people be aware of what we do and how we do it, because it's just, a lot of people just not aware of what, what goes on, and just to interface with the community and the outside agencies that we might be working with, with the, whether it be the Highway Department or other county groups.
So, as you know, we're basically a small town, you know, big fish of the state, and our citizens expect the public officials to be available and accessible to them. And how would you interact with the citizens and the media? What would be your day-to-day interaction style, and, and how would you interact? What, what's your method you feel you best interact with the citizens and media?
One-on-one, I'd, I'd like to talk to the, to our citizens as an individual, find out how they feel on different groups. And as far as the media, it would be what the city's outlook would be represented to the, to the media. As far as the community goes, I'd like to do a little outreach to them, to get them more involved, get their input instead of just the disappointments or issues that they don't actually understand, and try to communicate our goals to them and, and what the community wants us to do.
Okay. Thank you. Hannah?
Thank you for applying, Mr. Haddo. My question to you is, what do you see as two of the most important issues facing the city of Bisbee, and how should the council address them?
Well, the two biggest issues I think are, are having our community have a place to live, and I've been noticing that you guys have been putting a lot of energy with Bill Crest, and there's the, the school, there's just a lot of areas that we can't address with the, with state law as far as rentals and short-term rentals and that sort of stuff. And I think that is something we could look at and figure out other ways, and I'd like, I'd like to congratulate you all on what you've done so far. I'd like to be part of that, because I think we can get affordable housing here. The other part is, there must be a lot of, a lot of money going into old Bisbee for the infrastructure and for the roads and that sort of stuff, and there's just a lot of energy and time for the older part of the town to be repaired, and I think that's something that we have to look on as far as our financial and budgets go for all the repairs, perhaps retaining walls, there's just a lot that we need to do. I think there's an opportunity for the city to make some money with some of these abandoned houses, and I'm not quite sure if the deeds are all gone from the fire, but there's just a lot of property that we could perhaps use in, in ways to help the community.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for applying. How would you as a city council member balance sometimes conflicts between, for the citizen ones and the city as a whole?
I think that there's needs to be give and take, and when you do the outreach with the citizens and you explain our position, I think we can get a lot of people to understand where we're at if they have all the information. I think we have a lot of misinformation that goes out, and there's just a lot of bad press. So, it's communicating clear and effectively with our citizens and making sure they understand, and to overcome their objections with, for their understanding of whatever the particular project would be. So, it's mostly communicating directly with them and spending some time going out and doing it, and, and being on the, on, on the road, or being at people's houses or into businesses to, to interface with them and be their representative. Thank you.
Well, we're going to have, just allow some follow-up questions, and I'll take one follow-up question, which would be, I believe we had a conversation a lot some time ago, but I didn't know if you have any, what you feel might be a conflict of interest in any business or any other situation that I, that you're involved in the city, or, or how would you feel about that, and would you accuse yourself, or how, do you have any inclination on if there, there would be any conflict of interest with you?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any conflict of interest. I feel very comfortable with all that I'm doing in my volunteer work, so I'm fully retired and just pretty much looking to use my experience to help further the city and my community there.
Okay. Great. Just wanted, go ahead, Hannah.
Okay. So, my question is kind of a two-part question here. Budget time is around the corner. What are your budgetary concerns and priorities? And then the second part is, do you have any ideas on ways to increase revenues?
Well, I'm not quite sure how we sit on, on the budget as far as the annual budget goes. You know, I, I've listened to some of your reports, and the city manager has, has let us know we have a little bit of a rainy day budget, so it sounds like we're in, in good shape. It sounds like we're in, we're, we're looking for the future. And what was this, what was the second question?
The second part is, do you have any ideas on ways to increase revenues?
I think with the businesses that we have here, I, I, you know, something as simple as putting up signs on the way from Tombstone coming here, letting people know about Bisbee, I really think, you know, the metropolitan Maricopa County area, they don't really know about Bisbee, and we're in their backyard, and I think we could do a lot just to keep the Arizona vibes here, and I think that would be exciting. We see a lot of tourists from Sierra Vista and local, but not three or four hours away as much as I think we could. And there could be lots of bus trips, there could be organized events down here as we have, and I think just getting the word out about Bisbee and do a little bit of social media, and just get the word out about Bisbee.
I think Mel has one.
Yeah. To be a little off from what I asked. You've been watching the council, you said you've been watching us performing. What do you think we can do, what we doing right, and what, what, what can you bring into this? What positively can bring into this the way we doing our businesses here? Can you have a recommendation or something that you bring in input that will make us the better managers, better custodians of the management of the city?
Well, I, you know, it takes a lot of time and energy you have to put into it, and I recognize the council meeting is just a short period, but you spend a lot of time, off-hours, doing work that you have to do for research, for budgets, research for issues that come up, sound ordinance issues, street issues, all those need to be addressed, and you, you know, deal with the concerns of our, our citizens. Thank you.
But to pile up, I would just ask if you have any questions of us, and any closing remarks you'd like to give?
No, I want to congratulate you all for all the efforts that you've done. I've been, I'm very proud of what, what I see here, and that was one of the reasons I threw my hat in the ring. I considered one time, talked to Lou, and they talked me out of it, and so I thought I, I'm really excited about the opportunity to be here, to work hard, and to represent my district, and then represent Bisbee where we could make this a destination, and that was what I think Bisbee could always be, is a destination, and that would be my goal, is to make this a fun place to be, because this is my retirement, and I love Bisbee.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, and we appreciate again your, your application and your desire. What we will do, we'll, we'll ask you to step out, well, right now, we're going to just go on to item two, which is a, entertain a motion to go into executive session. Somebody would like to make that motion?
I, okay, go ahead. I move to go into executive session to discuss and consider the appointment of council member vacant board three council, position as authorized by ARS three eight dash forty-three one point zero three.
We have a motion, second to go into executive session. We'll call you back in when we're out. Thank you very much. All those in favor going into executive sessions signify by saying aye. I oppose aye. We are in executive. You like it?
I think so.
All right. We have come out of executive session, and so I will move on to the final item. I will entertain a motion for discussion, a possible approval for appointment of a council member, member for the vacant board three council seat. Is there any discussion or motion?
Just not really a discussion, but a comment.
Okay.
I would just like to thank both of, of them for, you know, putting their hats in the ring and, and showing interest in the city. Thank you both.
Get aware, absolutely. Giving us a choice always makes things a lot more important to the city and to, and to us, so. Any other comments or, okay, I'll entertain a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Juanetta Hill as council member for vacant Ward three position.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll, her, her as the appointed council member for Ward three. Take a roll call. Johnny?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Mel?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is unanimous, six-zero. Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you very much for, for your time. We, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you. We'll see you at seven.